Okay. Good evening, this is the Concord Select Board on December 6, 2021. Welcome to everyone live and by Zoom. I would ask at this time that everyone in the room, please turn off your phone ringers. And great, we don't need a roll call vote because we're live.
Actually, no.
We do have one member. Okay, let's have a roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates.
Here.
Mr. Dane.
Present.
Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
Great, and the consent agenda.
So a move to approve the consent agenda, which includes a one day special liquor license to the Concord Museum on December 14th and a one day special liquor license for Barrett Sotheby's International Realty for December 15th.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, and we will now have the town manager's report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have the printed report in the packet, just a couple of area highlights. The IT department successfully won a community compact grant for about $89,000 to improve Wi-Fi access in certain town buildings. The irony of that timing of that announcement and the early part of this meeting are hard lost on me. Glad everybody straightened out, though. So that's, you know, that'll help out, I think, with, you know, both employees and residents to connect and use our guest network at various buildings. The personnel board met last, I think, last week, the week before last, and made a couple of, took a couple of action items based on recommendations from the town, one of which was a retroactive 2% wage increase, wage increase within the ranges. We have salary ranges that are increased every year as part of the compensation plan at town meeting, and then there are also what we call across the board increases. This was a 2% within the ranges to try and make up for some of the ground that had been lost over the last two years when the, within the range increases had been frozen as a result of the reduced budgeting during the pandemic. And so we thank the personnel board for their consideration. We also are going to adjust our compensation plan to ensure that that employees are compensated, at least at the Commonwealth's middle, minimum wage. So these increases are being funded through the existing salary reserve appropriation, and I think may be eligible for ARPA reimbursement, depending on how these, those funds gets So I have a few more items from the departments. The BD Center has made some changes to their charges. You know, it's, the pandemic has been especially hard on the BD Center, so if you support that department and you want, and you're not a member, we encourage you to sign up and help support the BD Center. It's a, it's a very great place to go have a swim or a workout, and it needs our support because, like I said, the pandemic has been especially hard. And noticeable work is underway at Jarrow, and so if you have a chance to walk out past there, you can see the pathways we're in, so that's going well. Public Works is also working with the police department and Concord School, Public Schools, on the submission of Safe Work, Safe Moves to School Grant. They've identified a few, a location on Lexington Ave that could use an extensive sidewalk for, it says Lexington Road, that could use an extension sidewalk to help children get to Alcott. And there was a note in there, as you can see, we have three new firefighters who are undergoing training, and it's, it's kind of an exciting time in the fire department to have three new members at once, and so we, we welcome them and we're excited to have them a part of the team. Any questions?
Questions for the town manager. Linda?
So thank you for mentioning the three new firemen. I'm just wondering, are they replacing three existing positions or are these new positions?
They are replacing people who, it's retirements, some retirements and some departures, but no, they're not new positions, they are replacements.
Thank you, and welcome to them.
Also, I just wanted to commend the town staff on the execution of the tree lighting that was very well attended and very well executed.
Yes, yeah, the tree lighting and I think we experienced it, oh, that's me. I think we experienced this at Ag Day as well, but the tree lighting and the menorah lighting that took place in West Concord, I think, really demonstrated how people really want to get out and be around each other and, and have shared, you know, community experiences because the tree lighting, the menorah lighting was well attended, and the tree lighting was really extraordinarily well attended and very well managed. I agree with that, Matt.
There was a very large crowd. Do you know how many people there were? I have no idea, but it was huge.
I would have to ask Kate if she has a sense of the number of attendees. I do, I do not know that.
I, yeah, Kate, I was deputy town manager. There was approximately 5,000 when we started, stopped counting. It was the largest in the past five years that we've been running. Very well done to the ref department and our police, fire and CPW crews.
Did you say 5,000?
Yes.
Wow, amazing, really excellent job, great. Any other questions for the town manager? Okay, I have a few chairs remarks. First of all, I've been asked to remind people to wear your masks indoors, get your vaccines and get your boosters. The select board will not be meeting next Monday, December 13th. And we will, however, be having a public hearing in this room on Thursday, December 16th, in advance of the special town meeting coming up in January. It will begin at 7:00 PM. It will be live and by Zoom. In fact, we're practicing tonight to see about the sound quality. So if anyone in the audience here is having difficulty, difficulty hearing, please indicate, and same with the select board. We're kind of trying to get a handle on the sound, and thanks to Mark Pauli for all of your efforts in that and your whole team. December 20th is our next regular meeting. We might have two possible executive sessions, so I'm wondering if possibly we can meet at 5 o'clock, and we'll hear more about that. Otherwise, we will here, be here very late.
On the 20th?
On the 20th. Do you want to decide now, or should I do this by email? Does everybody, is there anybody who prefers to start at 6:30 and as late as we go, we go, or does everybody?
Looks like 5 o'clock could work.
5 o'clock, and you know, maybe we'll bring some snacks or something. Is there anybody who cannot make it at 5 o'clock if we have to have two executive sessions?
That's fine.
What day you're talking?
December 20th, two weeks from today.
I'm available.
Okay, so we'll tentatively say that's what we're going to do, and if you can't make it, we'll change it around.
In-person meeting?
Sorry?
In-person?
Um, yes, so far, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Okay, and finally, we heard from Senator Barrett last meeting and Representative Bay of the meeting before, that our special legislation is moving very slowly, if at all. And I'm wondering, since there's six bills, there's five of us, I'm wondering if each of us would take one of the bills and keep an eye on it. Does, does that sound like something that's doable, that might work?
So, um, yes, they said it was slow moving, but I also heard that they were going to, at least Senator Barrett committed to trying to move it out of the Joint Committee on Revenue. January is the time for a blitz of letters of support for all of our home rule petitions, as well as the statewide articles that we think support our home rule petitions. So, um, you know, I'd be willing to do that, and I think, for example, the housing group is going to, housing group is going to try to hold up their part on, on that home rule petition, so.
Well, okay, thank you, Linda, so you'd be willing to remind the legislators about the housing special legislation?
Sure, I can take that category.
How many of those are there?
There's like three different ones, for sure.
Okay, thank you, that'd be really great.
Okay.
Is there anybody else that would be willing to remind them on some of our others?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to really know what's going on from looking at the official records and what you see on the website. From what our two legislators said, it sounds like the only one of our bills that has any prospect of being adopted is the senior means tested tax bill.
Other than liquor licenses.
Yes, well, of course, important things are always taken care of, but the, if there was a, and if there was a land transfer tax, it would very likely be an omnibus bill or the, or the Somerville bill, but not ours.
Right.
So it's, it's not much, it's, it's going to be like watching paint dry.
I know.
But you can't not do it in terms of trying to follow through, and if, if the press is in January, and if it's going to happen, it'll ha- happen then.
Right, so I think the liquor license were probably okay, and Henry, are you volunteering to work with the legislature on the senior means testing?
I know, I'm sorry.
Senior, senior means testing?
Yeah.
The senior means testing? You, you would work on that one with the, remind them about that?
Yeah, but I don't really know how you can, you know, the only, the only ones that I have any contacts with are the, the real estate ones, the, and which are the land transfer tax bills, because I have a, a personal contact with a legislative representative.
Okay, so you want to work on the real estate transfer one? Okay, that would be great. And then the 17-year-old voting, they were very skeptical.
Very skeptical, yeah.
So.
And, I mean, I think that Senator Barrett was also very skeptical of the fossil fuel infrastructure. You know, and without his support, it's going to be very difficult, I think, to
Right.
progress that. So I just wonder, you know, clearly, we should make the effort to send letters of support, but I don't know what other kind of monitoring or that we can do.
Well, he did say about the fossil fuel that.
I mean, he's anticipating other approaches to achieve the same results, is what he's
He was saying that he could use us and some of the other towns' leverage to say, you know, that we're all out there putting the pressure on, so that, that's helpful. Okay, that's, that's good, that's a pretty.
But I think it's, if we're counting or for, counting on a source of funding for affordable housing, I wouldn't hold my breath on that.
Okay, but this is turning into more than.
It is, and.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I only want to hold on, but can I just clarify with the chair? So it sounds like Henry's going to deal with the transfer fee. Is he also dealing with the building surcharge?
Building permit surcharge? The building permit surcharge, do you also have the same sort of context there?
Yeah, and I think that's, I think he was a little more optimistic about that.
Yeah.
The ones that would have, you know, broad application across the state are, they're not going to pass those on a town-by-town basis.
Right, right, okay, so that's good.
So do you want me to take the senior means test then?
Sure, thank you, Linda. So that's a really good segue, anyway, into our next item, which is transfer of affordable housing funds to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And Stephen, are you going to talk about this, or is someone else here?
I certainly can, I know Linda can as well. As you all know, there was a bylaw that was approved, I believe, at the 2020 annual town meeting, that created the municipal affordable housing trusts and authorized appropriations that had been previously made to be under the purview of the affordable housing trusts. And now that the trust has been established and our trust documents have been recorded, the, the trust is now in a position to take, take responsibility for the, for the funds and allocate them. There have been some commitments made through the select board slash town manager in accordance with the appropriate, the rules from the articles that had the original appropriation, so I think we want to make the transfer subject to the existing commitments, but that's basically it. Linda, you want to add more than that?
We got most of that, the sound is a little bit echoey in here, yeah. And I'm also having trouble seeing who else is here on Zoom. Is there someone else on Zoom who wants to speak up?
No, no one has their hands raised.
Okay, so my understanding is that after spending some money on some projects and adding in last year's money, our current balance is 635,000 in the Affordable Housing Fund, and that now we want to transfer that to the Affordable Housing Trust, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think it's, some of it is committed, but not spent, and I think we want to maintain those commitments that, that the board has made.
Okay.
And it's really, I mean, the, when the Affordable Housing Trust bylaw was approved, it, it called for these funds to be under the discretion of the Affordable Housing Trust, so I do think this is somewhat of a ministerial act, but I think it's good to formally, you know, pass the baton, if you will, from the select board town manager's office to the Affordable Housing Trust for oversight of these funds.
Okay, questions from the board? Linda?
Just one minor correction. Liz Russ has captured the fact that 5,000 was returned, but she didn't capture it in the, the current balance.
I think it is captured.
I checked it a couple of times.
Because you see, there's a 705 in there, there was like a 95,000, it might have been 100,000 before that.
Okay, so that's possible she has.
I think that's what that is.
That's possible she has, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Liz Russ has, Terry, Liz has a hand up.
I didn't see you at all on the Zoom, Liz, thank you for attending.
Sure, hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to just see, to make sure that, that I understand when you, when you, the commitments that are made but unspent, so those funds would transfer to the trust with that commitment, but the funds would transfer. I think that's, we just wanted to clarify.
The motion is worded that way.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, okay, so I guess we're ready for a motion?
Sure, move to approve the transfer of oversight of the designated funds to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust pursuant to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust bylaw, as approved at the 2020 annual town meeting, subject to any funding commitments that may have been made by the select board or town manager prior to this
Okay, roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to the language of the ballot question for the proposed Concord Middle School for the February 3rd special town election. Who wants to address this, I guess it's standard language, Kari Sue. Kari, would you like to talk about this?
Yes, certainly. This, this language has been provided by bond counsel, and your vote is required in order for the language to appear on the February 3rd ballot. And so that is why it's before you this evening, and then I expect that on, at your December 20th meeting, I will have the special town election warrant for you to sign that will have both this question and also the school committee vacancy on it.
You're talking, this is the vote that would be taken as a town election?
Yes.
If the, if the funds are voted at the town meeting, is that right?
That's right.
Correct.
Would that vote not have required that it states the amount?
That's correct.
The vote that we have.
Under a prop two and a half, you are not allowed to state the amount.
Not allowed to state the amount?
It's very weird, but you can have.
For that exclusion, you don't, right?
We're asking people at the polls to vote to ratify the expenditure without telling them how much they're voting for.
Yes, the legislation, I don't agree with it, but that's what it says.
Well, you know.
We can have lots of educational forums, we can have written information, we can have lots of stuff, but it can't be on the ballot.
Terry, it, it'll be on the, and the warrant for town meeting, though, is that correct? The amount?
Yeah, it already is, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
At town meeting, and even this month, December 16th, there will be a full explanation of the design, the costs, lots of time for questions, a full presentation, but not on the ballot itself.
Well, but you typically are going to have maybe 200, 300, 400 people at town meeting. A typical town election where people go to the polls to vote on this is likely to be 2,000 or 3,000 perhaps.
Yep.
So the great majority of those people will not have been at town meeting and will be voting on something that they are not being told how much they're voting to approve.
I agree with you, Henry, this is the law, we've been having this problem ever since 1982 when it became law, and I, you know, you're right, but this is, it is what it is. Okay, I guess we need a motion for this vote.
Move to approve the language for the ballot for the special town election scheduled for February 3rd, 2022, as printed in the select board packet for this meeting.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Reluctantly, for all the reasons we just heard, aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
And, and related to that, you know, I would urge all of the voters to pay attention. Come to the town meeting, come to the forum on December 16th. If you can't do any of that, watch it on video.
Check the website.
Right, be an informed voter, because the law does not provide the information right on the ballot. Know what you're doing before you come to the election. Okay, we will now move on to the clarification of the Personnel Study Task Force charge, and I understand Susan is the liaison, and there is some confusion about the charge, and that is what we're going to take up now. Susan?
Thank you, Terry. There was quite a discussion at the last meeting about whether or not the charge included examining and amending existing personnel administrative rules and regulations, for lack of a better word. And my understanding of the, the purpose of the charge is to study the bylaw and the charges, as it says in the purpose paragraph at the beginning, paragraph A, and I would and, and related documents and make recommendations for appropriate changes. I think that, that I would suggest crossing out a related documents, because I, my understanding of this is that the, the role of the committee is to examine the existing bylaw, the existing charge, and to look at what, what their suggestions are for the role of the personnel board going forward, which, as we know, has been discussed for quite some time. If you go down to membership in paragraph C, it says, "The purpose of the task force would be to provide an impartial study and proposal with regard to the future role and function of the personnel board," which I think is pretty clear. And obviously, there have been a lot of documents used in that study, but I don't think it's within the scope of the task force to amend the existing documents, but to make suggestions if they choose to. On page two, duties and responsibilities, it says, "Make recommendations to the select board on updates to the personnel bylaw." And here's where, this is where the confusion arose, "And related town personnel policies governing the town's non-unionized employees." And I think that's what's causing the confusion, and I would suggest that it, it state, make recommendations to the select board on updates to the personnel bylaw and role of the personnel board, which is consistent with the, the statement of the purpose on the first page. So that's my suggestion. I noticed that Anne Rarick is here, I think, I thought I saw her, and I didn't know if she might want to say anything about that. No, she doesn't, okay, thank you. So that's what I wanted to bring before you, to see if you would consider tightening it up a little bit, so it's not, so it doesn't include actually amending personnel policies, because that, you know, there could be a study group to do that, but that's, in my mind, it's a whole different project that requires HR expertise, and, and that our role is to look at the, or the, the task force role is to look at the future role of the personnel board, and in doing that, you use the bylaw, the 1955 documents and other documents, and line it up with who are the stakeholders, who's responsible for the specific actions? Excuse me. So, comments or questions?
So, thank you, Susan, so to clarify, it sounds like the confusion is, is this task force supposed to make recommendations on the town personnel policies themselves? And it seems like perhaps they are not supposed to be doing that, that's the personnel board's role, and so you are subs, you are recommending to take that language out and put it instead, and role of the personnel board?
Correct.
Okay.
Future, Linda? Future role of the personnel board, I think she said.
Future role of our person, okay. Matt, and then Henry?
Yeah, I thought what we would get out of this is a proposal for a new personnel bylaw, or updated personnel bylaw, plus some proposed charge for a successor to the personnel board, or the personnel board itself. Those are the two things that I would expect to get. When I think of a model personnel bylaw, my only question is, to what degree does that include some aspects of rules and regulations? And that, I don't know the answer to.
And personnel policies?
Does it necessarily, because if I look under number two of duties and responsibilities, how do you ensure that the town system for personnel administration is efficient and is able to maintain equity, accountability and transparency, and is able to respond quickly to change? And is able to respond quickly to changing laws and recruit and, you know, provide a grievance process in particular without getting into rules and regs of some sort? So I I guess I have a question about that. I I would see it not as a straight cut and dried thing. I think that a personnel bylaw in fact does kind of intrude a little bit onto rules and regs, but not all of them.
Matt, just to clarify, I think the issue is, yes, the Personnel Board will be dealing with rules and regs and personnel policies. The question is, the way D1 is written, is this task force supposed to?
I just don't want to accidentally prevent the Personnel bylaw from being complete by excluding, totally excluding from it, the notion that it it can't have any rules or regs embedded in it.
Right, I don't, I, okay, but so I think the problem is that the task force is itself looking at personnel policies. You see that in in D1, you can read it that way. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I thought that you're, the proposal that Susan was putting on the table is to strike that.
Correct.
It's not to strike the part that says Personnel bylaw. It's to strike what follows. Related town personnel policies governing the town's non-unionized employees.
Okay.
And substitute and future role of Personnel Board, because.
And I actually agree with that change to one.
Okay.
Before we get into too deeply into this, I think the the nub of the question arises from some concerns that members of the study group had. And and several of them are present. And I will have some comments, but I think it might be helpful to hear from them as to what they see. The problem is if there is a problem and what they would like to see, what they'd like to see happen in order to be a more effective, a more effective group.
Okay.
Can we do that? And then I will have a few comments.
Okay. Anne, do you want?
Well, I I think the summary is is what it is. What we were trying to do is address the issues of the person, the role of the Personnel Board. But in so doing, we have to look at all the different parties that are involved in interfacing with the Personnel Board. So we were trying and and you laid out the stakeholders that we should be in touch with. And that's what we're doing.
That sounds correct. Okay, are there?
And Paul McCon is also on the task force. He has probably been doing as much work as any of us have been doing.
Okay, Paul?
I'm mute, Paul.
Uh, Paul, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I, my initial reaction, because we're just sort of confronted with this now, or confronted with this now, is I'm more confused now than I was before. I got, we're talking about the changes. I I saw the four corners of this of this document, our charge being very clear. I running through my mind is how do you get to there without passing through something else? And if you're not going to even look at the personnel policies, I'm not I'm not thinking it's our role to become the 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 Human Resources Department, however, it was very clear to me before that we were going to create a document that looked at everything for the purposes of the Personnel Board's role in 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 our government. And I don't know, taking out related documents, if they're related documents, why are we taking them out? I I'm I'm more, I wasn't confused before, but I am now, to be perfectly frank. I I don't think anyone is, I don't think this document, the charge suggests that we're rewriting everything. It just means making recommendations to things that we find that through this process for our recommendations regarding the Personnel Board. We have to get through these things to understand them. So I'm not, I I I just feel a little blindsided, frankly, with having to change the the what what we're doing. We're taking aspects of it out and I have to make a comment on it now. So I'm, I'll leave it at that.
I'd like to respond and then I'll also ask Bill Maratchek, who is the Chair of the Personnel Board, for his comments. The thinking was the the bylaw is kind of the guiding document. That's the central document that the Personnel Board uses to make its decisions and do its deliberations. And that document has a lot in it that Personnel Board really doesn't do. That that has shifted over to the HR department now that we since we've, that's what we've had, the structure we've had for a number of years. It wasn't that, so I agree that you have to look at things, but the recommendations for changes would be to the bylaw and and to make recommendations for the future role of the Personnel Board. But not to make changes to the Personnel Administrative Policies, because I think that's broad and deep. And I don't know if any of us or any of you on that task force has the HR expertise to be able to make judgments on that. But we do have Amy as a resource.
Excuse me, can you ask, I need to know, what are you looking for in the way of expertise? Because i- if we were recruited for this task, what is our lack of expertise?
Municipal HR.
While we're talking about the personnel bylaw, are we talking about the tables that show like truck driver third class, the salary range is X to Y?
No, 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 that's the comp and classification form. The bylaw says things like the Select Board, I mean, the Personnel Board will approve or rec or, you know, make changes to overtime or working condition pieces mostly. So and in reality, as maybe pointed out here by someone on the Personnel Board, that's not what the Personnel Board does. So going forward, want to find a a role for the Personnel Board that is use, that feels gratifying to the members who are doing it. It's useful to the town and that establishes some areas that different stakeholders are responsible for, like the HR manager, like the town manager, the deputy town manager, or senior management, or Personnel Board, or citizens. Because it's not clear. Excuse me.
Yes, so.
Let's go to Bill Maratchek. And then, Henry, you had a number of questions.
Well, this is Bill. Thank you for allowing me to unmute here. I certainly have lots of opinions and and comments, but I don't really think it's appropriate for me as the Chair of the Personnel Board to try to decipher or to to articulate what in fact the charge is for the task force. That's that's the purview of the Select Board. And I shouldn't have anything to say about that, in my opinion. And when I am interviewed, I'm certainly happy to provide my my comments and input. At this point in time, I share Susan Bates' remarks. But I don't think it's my place to add any additional comments or clarification, because I'm not the one who established and ratified these, the task force, nor did I participate in the discussion related to the definitions in particular. So I think that's about all I can contribute at this point.
Okay, thank you. Paul, we'll get back to you in a minute. Henry has a number of questions and then.
Well, let's go back to the, where we started on this. We started because it was a proposal made at the last town meeting to essentially to significantly reduce the authority and powers of the Personnel Board. And rather than debate that matter at the town meeting, we we agree that we would form a study committee to examine the situation because the Personnel Board was not, was non-functional at this point. And and it needed to be examined so that it could be a practical and useful tool for administrating, at the, at least at the executive level, that whole, that whole process. We did come up with a charge which represented a compromise, but I think that it was clear that we wanted the group that was selected to deal with this to have a great deal of discretion about what they did. We had, we were fortunate to get a very experienced and very, very wise group of people to go on to this study committee. And I think that what should happen if we're going to make any changes to the charge would be, if anything, to broaden rather than narrow the scope. I think we gain nothing by narrowing the scope of what they can do. If they come up with things that we don't like, we still don't have to adopt them. But I think if you have people who are willing to put the time and effort, and these are a group of distinguished and experienced people, town employees, high-level town employees, members of the Finance Committee, former member of the Select Board, who are actually willing to put their time into this. And I think we do them a disservice if we try to tie their hands on the job that we've given them to do. And so if there's any reinterpretation that is necessary, I would like to see the reinterpretation be that the study committee would have the ability to make whatever recommendations about the management of our personnel system that they thought fit to make and that they would have the authority to make inquiries, examinations, studies, gather data and so on, that would be necessary for them to come up with a useful suggestions. And it's, as I say, I'd turn them loose and see what they come up with. These, these are, these are capable people. They're as a high-level composition as committee as any we have in town. And I'm, I think we should turn them loose and respect their their independence.
Okay. Some very good ideas there. We are running way over time, so we're going to have a few more comments about this. And then we're going to continue this item next meeting, because I guess I thought it would be a quick item. And I see it's going to be quite a long discussion. Before we get back to Susan, I just want to see if Linda or Matt has comments, and I know Paul also had some. Excuse me.
I had no problem with Susan's recommendation, and I do not see that as in any way limiting the the committee to at least look at the personnel documents.
There we go. That's exactly the way I feel.
Yeah.
That, you know, I think that the committee needs to be able to look at the current rules and regulations just as context for understanding what the Personnel bylaw needs to cover. And but that the objective is to come in with a proposal for a revised Personnel bylaw and for a proposal for the charge for the Personnel Board or whatever entity they decide needs to administer the Personnel bylaw. And so I I don't expect to come in with a new set of personnel rules and regulations and policies. I just don't expect that to be an output. But I also don't want to, you know, constrain the committee from looking at such things.
Terry, can I, can I make a comment? I I think there are some personnel policies that relate to the bylaw. But the by, the Personnel bylaw really has somewhat limited scope in terms of the Personnel Board. So I I just want to make sure that it's clear that the that I think it's fair to say that, you know, po- policies or, you know, other types of governing documents that relate specifically to the Personnel bylaw, you know, should be looked at. But the vast majority of our personnel policies don't relate to the Personnel bylaw. And I want to make sure that 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 the focus of the task force is clear. Because I think it can be, it can be disruptive if it just is, you know, looking at if we have a lot of policies and it comes a lot around, and there are a lot of legal considerations, a lot of employment law considerations that really need to be considered. You know, there really isn't, no one really has broad discretion in this field. A lot of these things are prescribed through statute or our local bylaw.
Okay. Paul, you had some comments and then Susan, and then we're going to wrap this up for tonight.
But I mean, maybe we are coming to consensus, though. It sounds like we may be. I mean, it would be nice, because I know that they have limited time and, you know, just leaving them in the lurch would not be good.
Right, okay, well, let's see, let's let Paul and Susan make their comments. And then we'll get back to that, Matt. Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, one, just one quick comment. I'm going to give you a concrete example of a personnel policy that overlaps into the Personnel bylaw that relates to the initial charge of the personnel, of the Personal Personnel Board, and that's the employee appeal procedure. There's.
A little bit of trouble. Can you say that again? There's an overlap. Your example is what?
I'm I'm holding a Personnel Policy and Procedure, a PPP, number 25, that's in 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 play as we speak, that deals with specifically the employee appeal procedure on a, basically a grievance, if you will. That is also mentioned in the, in the, excuse my voice, in the Personnel Bylaws. And it'd be one thing that we would look at to see if they're consistent. One relates to the other, how it gets applied to the Personnel Board. As it stands now, an employee has the right to grieve. A non-union employee has a right to bring before the Personnel Board a variety of things, basically anything to the to the Personnel Board. And there's another document that's the PPP. So I I think that's part of how these things work together. I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, so what I would suggest.
It's appropriate to look at every single minute detail.
Susan still needs to speak, but.
Right, I didn't, I didn't catch all of that, maybe you.
Well, he was just talking about related personnel policies and procedures to the wording of the Personnel bylaw and that the two, because they impact one another, to be able to look at the one to inform the other is key.
Okay. Okay, Susan.
The intent wasn't to limit what materials they, the task force has access to, but rather to help them to focus on something that is, they have a year really to, or a year and a few, 15 months, say, to put together. And that the the main task is to look at the bylaw and make recommendations about the future role of the Personnel Board. So it's not to, but I think it's really easy to grab on to this particular policy or that particular policy. And all of a sudden, and and you. And all of a sudden, and, and use a lot of time, whereas if you use the bylaw as the guide, then. Certainly they can point out or make whatever suggestions they want, but the, the product needs to be. Um, a role for the Personnel Board going for, forward and a review of the bylaw and, and who's. Who's responsible for each of the pieces. Is it HR? And that, and that's been talked about for years. Is it the HR Director? Is it Personnel Board? Is it the Town Manager? So those are clarifications that, um, need to be made, in my opinion.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be to leave Section A alone. It's somewhat ambiguous, but it is also just the entry to the whole thing. And then just to make the change that was suggested for Section D one. Which was to replace and-related town personnel policies with. And the future role of the Personnel. Board. For its successor.
Thank you. That's actually what I was suggesting. I was reading, oh, okay, and so leave in.
Section A, because I think otherwise the interpretation might be that you can't study. The, I mean, it, it's not within scope to study Personnel Policies and Procedures. And I think it is in scope. And so I would just leave A alone.
Okay.
And, and you talk about appropriate changes, but then D one spells out the specific changes that are to be. Recommended. And that is to the Personnel Bylaw and to the, um. The Personnel, the charge for the Personnel Board or its successor.
Should we add Personnel Board Charge in D one?
That's, that's what I was going to say, strike. I could make the motion.
Okay.
Okay.
If, if we're okay, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I just, I, I agree with you, man.
I may not, um, um, let me find probably the actual text that we're looking at here.
I just have one additional suggestion under appendices. That would be the place to put Personnel Policies. Uh, under appendices in terms of what they can refer to as opposed to. It's just an addition. At the very bottom of that document, it says appendices.
Appendices. And so you would say Personnel Policies and Procedures.
So it's a, it's another reference document.
Yeah, okay. So. Eric, you had something else that you were trying to?
I'm, are you, you're talking about the section.
We have amended, yes.
These powers and responsibilities, right?
Duties and responsibilities is what it states now.
And you, which item do you want to change?
D one.
One?
So as it states now, it's make recommendations to the Select Board on updates to the Personnel Bylaw and related town personnel policies. Governing the town's non-unionized employees. But I was going to strike and-related town personnel policies and replace it with. And the future charge or role of this Personnel Board or its successor.
I don't know what you're getting by changing that.
Well, the, the idea is to focus the, what the recommendations are for. The recommendations that we expect are. Here is what we propose that the future bylaw looks like. And here is the charge for the body. That would administer the Personnel Bylaw.
That's already.
And town policies and procedures.
That's already captured in the opening paragraph, Henry.
That's right. And so we just leave that alone.
Yep.
And then we just make a change to D one to reflect that we're not really talking about making. Recommendations for town personnel policies. We're talking about making recommendations for the Personnel Bylaw and its administration. And yet we're going to look at policies and procedures to do it.
Right. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, I think the problem is maybe, um. Henry's having some of the same problem I am with the echo in the room. Um, but Henry, I marked it up. Would that help you? Can, can you pass that over?
Well, okay, but I think it could be more broadly stated than that, but yeah.
Okay.
And again, this should probably be shared with the public, you know, passing notes.
Well, why don't you, um, read your motion again? That's what I wrote there, was the motion.
Yeah, oh, okay. So I move that we amend the charge. For the Personnel Bylaw Study Task Force. Section D one to strike the phrase. And-related town personnel policies governing the, the town's non-employees and unionized employees. And replace it with and the proposed. Charge for the Personnel Board or any successor. To administer the policies for the town's non-unionized employees. And then to add to the list of appendices, the Personnel Policies and Procedures.
So you don't want to simplify it by just saying and recommendations for the future role of Personnel Board?
Well, because it may not, there may not be a role for the Personnel Board and there might be some other entity. Well, for example, the goal, the, the previous one suggested the Town Manager would be.
Well, future role of the Personnel Board or successor and just, and just.
Actually, I withdraw that because that, we can't do that because it's in the town charter.
I think.
So it's basically the future role of the Personnel Board. Sorry. So to strike and-related town personnel policies. And replace it with and the future role of the Personnel Board.
I think that's.
And then to add appendix to the appendices, the Personnel Policies and Procedures, okay?
Okay, all right.
Any second to that?
Can we ask how, whether the members of the Study Committee to find out a workable, uh, a workable solution?
Do, do the.
Very quickly, yes, because, um, if not, um, if we, if we can't finish this up, we're, we're going to continue next time.
Right, so before we vote this, is this a reasonable path forward? I'm asking those others on the.
Ian?
I, I don't feel comfortable, uh, asking, uh, responding without talking to the rest of the committee.
Exactly, okay. So I think it's our call.
All right.
All right, well, we're just kept to table at this time.
Okay.
I, I feel bad that we're leaving you kind of.
Okay.
Without a resolution. Okay.
Okay, I think we got most of the discussion. Um, if, um. Susan and Matt want to put that in writing, we'll have it the next time.
Sure.
And in the meantime, Paul and Ian, if you want to talk to your committee, and we'll continue next time.
Can you send, can you send the wording you just, uh, voted on to us, please?
Yes.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
But we did, there wasn't a vote.
There wasn't a vote because we'll just ask the proposed wording and if the task force. Is amenable, then we'll bring it up for a vote next.
Okay.
For now, you've got the charge you've got.
Okay, thank you very much, um, for your service and for, um, your patience on this. So, um, we now would like to hear, um, from the School Committee. And that we're going to have a joint meeting with the School Committee. That was supposed to start at seven o'clock. Sorry to keep you folks waiting. And, um, does the School Committee want to call to order?
Yes, please. So we'll do a brief real call. We have three members here. Uh, Court Booth.
President.
Tracy Morano.
Present.
And myself, Cynthia Randy, present.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Um, okay, so we have here. Um, Carrie Lefleur, who is going to present the Capital Plan. That has now gone through step one, which was our joint meeting in September. Then you had a very productive meeting at the Finance Committee in November. And tonight we're supposed to look at it one more time, make any last changes and then vote to adopt. So Carrie, thank you for coming. Um, go ahead.
Thank you and good evening again. I'm Carrie Lefleur, the Chief Financial Officer for the town. And I have a, just a brief presentation. Um, some of the remarks that the Chair made were actually the introductory remarks. Again, this is the third of three meetings that is outlined in the, in the recommendations of the Capital Planning Task Force. That were approved by the Select Board earlier this year. So on this first slide. This on the left-hand side shows what our capital planning process was before the task force. So what the task force looked at. And then on the right side, the changes that resulted. And, and I think one of the easiest changes or one of the best changes is just in the nomenclature. Um, as a result of the Capital Planning Task Force recommendation. We refer to our capital projects as Tier One, Tier Two and Tier Three. And that's so much easier than all of the terms that we had used before. So there really is no change in the Tier One. These are the projects that, um, and purchases that are generally up to a hundred thousand dollars. Funded through cash and presented as part of the Town Manager's operating budget. The Tier Two, these are projects typically between a hundred thousand. And before, all, all of the years prior, generally up to about two million dollars, although this was somewhat arbitrary. Um, it wasn't, it's not set in stone in any policy, but about up to two million dollars on a single-year basis. And this was our debt plan. So these are items that we fund through the issuance of debt, but the debt is paid within the levy. And then Tier Three, this is really what the Capital Planning Task Force focused on. Tier Three is, is now for projects that are over five million dollars, whether they're in a single year. Or, uh, multiple years. So some of the, the parks projects really were what a lot of the discussion was focused on. We have parks projects, which maybe there's, there's a half a million dollars or a million dollars of funding in one year. But if you look at the entire project, it might exceed five million or come close to that. Uh, another, a, a, and these Tier Three, these are items that would be funded typically through excluded debt. So these would generally come up as standalone warrant articles. But one of the recommendations of the Capital Planning Task Force was to have a uniform process for vetting these particular projects. And so on this slide, this, it, these, uh, this slide outlines what this uniform process is. So first, the first requirement is the development of a ten-year plan, including both town and school projects. And as a part of this process, uh, there's a requirement that there be an integrated decision-making process. So that the town projects on an administrative level, as well as a, a public level with, with the elected boards. Looking at the projects and, and putting them all together and doing some prioritizing. Um, on an administrative level before they're brought forward to bring through the public process. Another requirement was a debt template. And in a couple of slides, we'll look at the debt template that the. Uh, that, that the task force recommended and show you how we're using it in this process. The third requirement was an interactive tax impact calculator. And we do have this ready to demo. This was put together by, or developed by our, um, IT Department. Hopefully this is going to work. And of course, it's, I think I need to share a different screen. Let's see if I can do that. So this is the, let's, this is the, the tax impact calculator that we put together. And this is modeled on the middle school project. And so up here. You can enter, this is the fiscal twenty-two value, but I'll just increase that slightly so you can see. How this works. And, um, again, it, it's for the, the middle school project. It can be customized for any project. Uh, but it does give people an idea of what the impact is, in this case for the middle school project or for other projects. We don't have this up on the website right now, um, but it is ready to go. And there is an opportunity for people who aren't familiar with their assessed value that you can click on and go into our vision assessment. Database and you can look at, um, you can look up your property and then add that in. It's great.
Yeah, although we hope to reduce that impact based upon.
We absolutely do, but, um, but we do, we have, we have that available and I, I think that's, that's a really neat option. So then the second key component of, of the new process is this public, the ability for the public to. Comment on the process. So we had a meeting in September. It was a joint meeting with the Select Board and the School Committee. Where we talked about a draft plan. In November, the plan was brought to the Finance Committee and we talked a little more in detail about. The tax impacts. And then we're here this evening for our third and final meeting and, um. Going to. Look at the final plan. And of course, my screen doesn't want to advance. Okay. So the, these are the projects that are in this ten-year window. And the last time that we came to you, we had, I believe we had. Three of these projects within the ten-year window, but we were showing all five of the projects. We are now being much more realistic about, um, the cost of the middle school project and understanding that the community can only bear. So much. The highest priority project for the town is the Public Safety Complex. And it is, um, in here, and I apologize, we actually modeled it at twenty-five million dollars. That's a, that's a typo. Um, but the, in the. Um, in the next slide, you'll see that we have it modeled at twenty-five million dollars. So the, the other three projects, we are showing them because they are priorities of the town and but for the middle school project. We would be looking to advance these projects. Now, there's been some discussion about the estimated costs that are associated with the projects. And, uh, we have not, those numbers are coming out of the Municipal Facility Study. That was done in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And so we only got to a certain level of detail. So we understand that those costs maybe are not representative of the work that would be done. But again, we're not, we're not talking about advancing those. So we just are leaving them at what we're showing in the facility study. So this one, I'm sure is going to be particularly hard to see. Let's see. Honestly, so let me just talk about what is, what is in here. So this is our ten-year period. I actually included. Um, a couple of years prior so that you can see what the debt service was before. Excuse me, before we add in the middle school project. Uh, we obviously had a significant amount of exempt debt related to the elementary school projects. And so we wanted to show that in here. One difference between what we're showing here and what you saw in an earlier version. Is the first version of this included all of the town's debt and only the town's debt. So whether it was exempt or whether it was within the levy, it was, it was showing, but it was just the town's debt. So that the overlapping debt, the debt associated with the high school project, the debt associated with Minuteman was not showing here. And I'm assuming everybody's interested in seeing what is the additional impact on property taxes. So I've updated this to pull out the non-exempt debt, which we're funding within the levy. And, and included the overlapping debt from the high school and from Minuteman. So you can see that. We've updated all of the numbers to reflect fiscal twenty-two because we've just gone through. The value certification for fiscal twenty-two. So we've updated the median and the assessed values for twenty-two. As well as the total value for the town. We've also modeled the middle school issuance over twenty years, which is what we had been showing. Level debt, meaning that the, the debt service payments are going to be fairly consistent year to year. Uh, but we have made some updates in the interest rate assumptions based on a second look that our financial advisor took. Knowing or understanding that the project is getting closer to being approved and potentially closer to being funded. So we are modeling the middle school in this particular scenario, assuming that we're going to borrow over a four-year period. The first year we would be borrowing eight million dollars with an assumption of a two and a half percent interest rate. The first year, we would be borrowing $8 million with an assumption of a 2.5% interest rate. In year two, 43.5 million at a 3.5% rate. Year three, also another 43.5 at 3.5. And then in year four, the final 5 million at 3.5. This is assuming $100 million project. And on this version of the template, we're not backing out any savings. So we're not assuming yet the use of the middle school stabilization fund. That is in a second slide. Because we have not, we have not yet decided how we would use that. So I wanted to make sure people could see the full impact. And then obviously, we're talking about several significant offsets, the stabilization fund, some operational savings potentially, and maybe some changes to how the debt is issued. So that's what the middle school looks like. And then the public safety complex, this is the second that's highlighted in blue. And I mentioned, this is the one project that we are including in this 10-year period, $25 million. This is modeled on a 20-year repayment, but equal principal. So this is declining debt service overall. This is how the town has financed all of its other projects, but not how the high school is financed and not how the Minuteman is financed. So that's what, that's what that looks like. When you make those adjustments to the middle school project, it brings the estimated impact down from 1,024 is what we were talking about, to about $995. And again, not using any stabilization fund. Are there, before I move forward, are there questions? Here's just sort of another look at if these assumptions were to, to come into being. The blue is the existing, the orange is the, what would be added as a result of the middle school, and then the gray as a result of the public safety.
Carrie, did you say it would go down from 1,024 to, what was it, 995?
995.
That's not very much, considering the interest rate went down a significant amount. But, okay.
So Carrie, I think you stated that it did not, it assumed that it wasn't assuming any stabilization funds, but the chart says that it is. So.
Are you, I do have a second chart. So this one says no offsets. And then I have a second chart that, that shows the middle school stabilization fund.
So this is the second one that you're now showing.
And this is the one that is eight, 43, 43, and five with level principal payments.
Level debt, level debt service.
Level payment.
Level payment.
Amortized over 20 years.
Correct.
So we're not able to read those. So it's a little too small. So what is the bottom line if you do include? Well, first of all, does this include the stabilization fund and the operational savings?
It, so this second slide includes or assumes $5 million in stabilization fund. The way that this was modeled by our financial advisor was to use it over four years and to use it to minimize the impact. So there are different amounts being used each year so that more is, more is used as, as the debt is coming on to sort of level or flatten out that peak in the, in the first few years where we're still paying elementary school debt to get us to, to just the, the middle school. So this may not be how we choose to use it, but it's how it was modeled. And, you know, we can talk about modeling that different, but it does not assume any use, any operational savings here. My thought was that the focus of this meeting really is the capital plan, not necessarily how we're going to fund the middle school. We've had a meeting about that at the public hearing next week. I'm sure there'll be significant discussion about that as well.
Okay. If you want to move on, and then we'll have select board questions and school committee questions.
But this, this play, this model gets your median tax impact up to closer to 2,000 than to 1,200 that we've been talking about.
So this, this chart shows all of the, all of the debts, all of the exempt debt service that would be on the median tax bill if both the middle school and the public safety complex were approved in this 10-year period. So it includes the balance of the elementary school debt. It includes the town share of the high school debt, and it includes the town share of the Minuteman debt.
So you can see, Henry, as you get FY25 up, that orange bar, those bars are all about the same length, but they're in the middle of other things that are changing in length.
And the blue on the left is the existing, which is decreasing.
Correct. Yeah.
That's the public school.
So this is the, really the end of the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Right. Are there other select board questions?
I have a kind of peripheral issue that I've just recently discovered, which is you mentioned the, the vision database and how property owners can look themselves up. But one thing that I was shocked to find is that when there are co-owners, that only the first owner is listed or searchable. And so even though, let's say, my wife and I hold our home in common, only I am searchable. And in fact, almost invariably, it's the husband. And so I just wonder if there's something that can be done to make the database more equitable and more usable by being searchable by the actual owners of the property, of their properties.
Sure. I'd be happy to talk to the assessors and the board of assessors to see what we might be able to do.
You mean to make the impact per capita rather than per.
No, no, it's just simply that, you know, when people look themselves up, even if they own a property, they are not necessarily searchable because only one of the owners that is listed as the owner.
So does that have any impact?
Even though they legally co-own the property, you know.
I think this is kind of off the top.
Sure. But it's just that, you know, we showed it as a way to people could.
Okay. Are there questions from the school committee? I cannot tell on this.
I'm going to stop, I'll stop the share.
So Terry, it's pretty straightforward. And as others have observed, we're not really discussing strategies to reduce the impact tonight. So the 100 million number is what it is, and your projections for the other projects are what they are. So assuming your math is correct, you know, this is, this is what the impact will be.
I do have one other question, which was just given that we now have special town meeting with a warrant that reads 103.7, not 100, should the capital plan reflect that versus 100 million? I don't know if it makes any substantive difference, but it is 3.5% above.
My suggestion is to wait and see what number gets voted at, at the town meeting. It might be 103.7, it might be, I guess, 102.7. And then we can update the plan rather than having to do it twice. But Susan, you have a question? And then Court?
Yeah, yes, I do. Thanks, Terry. I just wanted to ask Carrie, I know there, you could, the two options for bond funding are level principal and level payment. And are there scenarios in which you might switch those depending on the period of debt service that you're in? And the second part is extending the length of the debt from 20 years to some larger number. 25 or 30.
Sure. So the reason that I have modeled everything on 20 years is because that's what the town has used for the town school projects. And I think absent any, any outside input, that's the starting point. I have already models on 25 years, on 30 years, 30 years being the maximum term that a school project can be financed for. So it's certainly easy enough to update to show that information. The, the decision on the term of the financing is a decision between the treasurer and the select board. Certainly, there can be input. But that's easy enough to change. In terms of, because this has come up quite a bit at the finance committee, we had an in-depth discussion about brainstorming on options for, to make the impact a little easier for people to bear. So the, the issue of refinancing or refunding debt has, has come up and how that might work. Municipal debt has typically something that's 20 years or longer, has a standard call provision at 10 years. So unlike a mortgage that you can essentially refinance anytime it seems feasible, municipal debt, because it's tax exempt, has a call provision. So you, you cannot refinance that because people purchasing these bonds are looking for a stream of income. So that has to be guaranteed. So there's no opportunity to refund before 10 years. Well, in a, in a standard issue, you can add early call provisions. You could add one at five years, but it's going to negatively impact the interest rate. Does that make a significant difference? We certainly can model that when we get ready to issue debt and see. When you go to refund or refinance, you have to be able to demonstrate savings. So one of the, and I have not, I actually have not followed up with the finance committee yet because this question came up. I received an answer from our financial advisor. We haven't had the opportunity. So it is unlikely that we could issue the debt for 20 years. And then at 10 years, say, we'd like to go 15 years out because you're not going to be able to show the savings. So it's much easier to start with a longer term and pull that back than to go in the other direction. So that's something that, that we need to keep in mind as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Court, you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Carrie, I want to just say I'm grateful for the clarity of the presentation. Very, very helpful. Thank you. Question about tier one. You referenced that $100,000 as a limit, but then as a general number. And I'm imagining that the school department could move money in excess of $100,000 for capital out of a current appropriation. Can you speak to the, the nature of that tier one quote-unquote limit and how general it might be in your estimation?
Sure. And that's, that's actually a good point because when we talk about tier one and $100,000, we're really talking about the town's budget and not necessarily the school's budget. So we, we have, we understand that the school's budget may have capital items in it that it pays cash for, but it really has not been a part of this process. So it really is up to the superintendent and the school committee to determine what level it thinks is appropriate for the equivalent tier one projects in the school budget.
Thank you very much. Good part of the record. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the school committee? Or the select board? What about questions from the public? This is a public forum. We wanted to invite questions from the public. I can't see who is attending from the public. So whoever is Zoom host, do you see?
Yeah. There's no hands up that I can see.
Stephen?
I was just gonna.
Yeah, I don't see, there's no hands up that I can see.
Right. If, if you want to use the raised hand feature under the reactions, there's, if you click the reactions budget button on Zoom, there's a raise hand button at the bottom of that. That's how you could indicate desire to speak.
Okay. How many people from the public do we have?
We have 39 total participants on the call.
Great.
Okay. But I still do not see anybody using the raise hand button, so I think we can proceed.
All right. So at this time, then, if there are no further questions, we need to have both boards vote to adopt this plan, understanding that every year we will update it. The projects that are out many years, well, of course, things will change. But every year, we will take a new look in updating. So do I have a motion from?
Are you saying that you want us to adopt this plan? Is that what?
Are we adopting or approving also?
Well, I saw among the additional material that came out with the, the first set of meeting materials, there were some materials that showed that with existing resources that the, that the, and with existing resources without realizing on assets like the puberty school and so on, by extending the term of the loan and using transfers from stabilization funds and so on, we could get that median impact way down like, like $600 or $700 per year as opposed to 1,200 a year.
Henry, if I could clarify, there, if I could clarify, there were two different things going on. One is what you're talking about, the middle school. How are we going to finance it? What are the offsets? Can, can, we're not voting that tonight. Okay. What we are voting is the plan that Carrie showed, showing that we will do the middle school. We will do the public safety building in, I think it was year eight, something like that. It just shows a general plan of what years we're going to do these projects.
So you're talking about essentially a hypothetical capital expenditure.
Correct.
Plan without approving the details of what we're going to do and actually literally how we're going to finance it. But we approve the general idea of building a middle school, then doing a public safety.
That's right.
And building a salt shed.
Right. And not doing a salt shed sooner. That's one of the outcomes of this process, right?
Right. And as far as the details, Henry, that's why we're having a special town meeting. We're going to go over lots of details about the middle school.
Okay. I think this is very pretty. Let's, let's do this one.
I also want to thank Chris Reynolds for running a very good meeting in November and highlighting a lot of what Henry's talking about and giving us a lot of good ideas. That letter from the finance committee is in the select board packet. So at this time, I would entertain a motion from the select board.
Sure. Move to approve the FY23 tier three capital plan as presented at this meeting.
Correction is pointed out by the chief financial officer of 25 million for the public safety complex.
Thank you, Linda. Yes.
Do you want to second that?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
Okay. Roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay. Thank you. And the school committee?
Great. And that the Concord School Committee vote to approve the capital sequencing plan and numbers that we saw here tonight with the knowledge that we'll have more in-depth discussions. Well, this is a part of the motion. I just want to make, again, make everybody aware that there's a lot of work still to be done on trying to reduce the impact of this debt. But back to the motion. So the Concord School Committee votes to approve this capital plan. Roll call. Mr. Booth?
Second on the motion here.
Oh, thank you.
I'll vote in favor. Thank you.
Marana, aye.
Mr. Booth is an aye and Suthi Rainey aye. So that's a 3-2-0 vote, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And thanks to everyone who worked on the plan. That's year one of the capital. That's year one of the capital planning process that we have now completed. Special thanks to Carrie for putting all of these charts together.
And if you indulge me, we'll adjourn the Congress School Committee. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Mr. Booth?
Aye.
Marano, aye.
And Cynthia Rainey, aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
At this time, we will now continue with discuss and rank the CPC funding requests. And we have with us the chair of the CPC committee, Diane Proctor. Thanks for joining us, Diane.
Thank you, Terry, so much. Can you hear me through this mask?
We can hear the podium really well.
Okay.
The Zoom, if you turn the volume down a tiny bit on the Zoom, it might be less-
Might be better because it echoes and it's hard to hear.
The podium is really good. We can hear that really well.
Okay, terrific. Our task this evening is to request that the select board put into priority their evaluation of the programs of the applications that we are receiving. I will review them very briefly and then ask you to ask any questions you might have about them. And then entertain any, listen to any discussion that you have about presenting an order for us in our deliberations going forward. The reason that decision, our discussion on your part, take it off?
Yeah.
Okay, the reason for the discussion, okay, on our part that is so important is that we have requests for 200, I'm rounding this off a little bit. We have requests for 200 and, $2,550,000 and we have $2,62,000 in funds, which includes our balance fund and, and other, and other materials that we've put aside, which means we're $499,000 at least short. So how we perceive is important. I would like also to add that there's been considerable community interest in the CPC this year. We had 87 people at our last meeting, which is a rather unusual number for a CPC meeting. In my experience, over three years, if we've had seven or eight people at a, at a discussion, a public hearing, it would be considered a lot. So there is a lot of community engagement, involvement and interest. The categories fall into community housing, historic preservation, open space, and sometimes adding to that community housing, open space and recreation, and then just plain recreation and administration. So to summarize briefly, and I believe you have a paper in front of you that provides some detail. For community housing, the Regional Housing Service Office of Concord, we have been supporting this for many years. It's an important operation that helps to support community housing. Historic preservation, 110 Walden Street, which is right down here off Walden Street and is an ancient building that is being beautifully renovated. And they are requesting $150,000. The Old Man's, which any Concordian knows well, the exterior preservation project, supported by the trustees of reservations, and they're asking for $38,500. A brief visit to that site quickly reveals the need for the requested funds that are being, that they're asking for. Wright Tavern Structural Repairs, Wright Tavern Legacy Trust and Trustees of First Parish Donations. The Wright Tavern Legacy Trust is a newly formed committee by the First Parish Church. They have raised a great deal of independent money, but they're looking for $260,000 additional dollars from a grant of similar proportions last year as they ready, get themselves ready for the 250th anniversary celebration, actually the year before that, the 249th, when that Wright Tavern was of particular importance. The Concord Oral History Preservation and Access Project is a, is historically, again, it's historical preservation. In those archives, we have some of the most, we have some fantastic interviews by Concord citizens over the years that have been recorded. But the quality of those interviews is sometimes only transcribed on paper and other times transcribed on rather fragile tapes. We all remember cassette tapes. At least anybody of my age remembers a cassette tape. And those are also fragile and those need to be as thoughtfully and as rapidly as possible transposed into something that will give them a kind of permanent anchor in our town. The Asaibet River Bluff Preservation and Housing Land Acquisition. This is a rather large grant request. Oh, the Concord Free Public Library is $22,841.50, although it does not show on the application that there are comparable funds that the Concord Free Public Library Board and the town have been supplementing those costs through hiring of preservation experts over time. The Asaibet River Bluff Preservation and Housing Land Acquisition is an open space and community housing application for $1 million. This is a property that would provide the continuity of open space in that area as well as an opportunity for community housing in the future. The Junction Village Open Space Town of Concord. The Junction Village, as we all know, sometimes known as Christopher Heights to citizens of our town. Junction Village is being built. And while it's being constructed, there will be all sorts of machines and opportunities as well as the people doing that construction have offered $25,000 to the town to help support the preservation of the land around it, getting rid of, getting rid of invasive species, fixing it up so that it's not going to be a high maintenance property, but an attractive one for citizens. And as you all know, it, it abuts the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. So a sense of continuity in terms of travel and having that be an appealing and easily navigable space is not unimportant. The Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. We are still awaiting information as to whether the state will provide some funding for this. But at present, there's a declivity on that Bruce Freeman Rail Trail at the point mentioned. And then an incline up to private housing. That declivity goes right down to White Pond. And the concern is that people will hop off the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, go down into the pond and that we will just simply erode the quality of that land in that area. And so the hope is that some sort of fencing will be built that might deter that kind of somewhat less than productive use of that space. The Asaibet River Pedestrian Bridge Construction. This is for drawings and permitting. DOT, the Department of Transportation, would provide most of the funding for this in the end. But we need, in order to apply for DOT funding, to have drawings and permitting process. And that's what this is all about. It gets us into the queue. It could be four or five years before such funding were forthcoming. For those who don't know exactly where this is, it's where the, if you go to the train station in West Concord and you look across to the area where the, a lot of doctors and dentists, a new hotel has property that one accesses off Baker Ave right now. This would be a bridge that would connect trails across the ravine between that commercial property and our town and make it possible to have a conduit between those areas, which would be probably an advantage to both. The recreational, and they're asking for $300,000. I'm sorry, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is asking for $300,000. And the Junction Village Open Space is asking for $300,000. The Recreation Facility Strategic Plan Consultant. It has been several years since we've had a really fine recreation plan. And this one is more comprehensive than ones we've had in the past. We have a new head of Recreation Department here in town. And the hope is to use $75,000 to try to figure out how we can best use the recreation facilities that we have right now and integrate them for public use. The next one for $36,000 is the Treatment and Prevention of Sinovirus Bacteria Blooms in White Pond, forwarded by the White Pond Advisory Committee. There is an effort to remediate the white pond through a device that corrals the sinovirus and has proven successful in other, in other ponds of this sort, kettle ponds of this sort. And their hope is that we can put $36,000 into that to try to make that pond useful for the coming summer. And last but not least, staff and technical services for the Town of Concord at $40,000. If you, those details have gone through this very quickly, but they're available on our CPC website. You can look at all of those funds, read the details for citizens who are interested. And we welcome participation and discussion in our meetings. Our next meeting will be tomorrow night at 7 o'clock.
Thank you very much, Diane. Questions from the board?
I have two questions.
Okay.
Is this list, does this list represent all of the applications that you received? And that the function you've performed on this is to allocate the available funds among those applications that are received?
Our task is to allocate the funds, Henry. We've not done so yet. Our task is to allocate them. We've not made those decisions yet. In large measure, we always wait for the select board's advice as to which ones they perceive to be the most important, particularly in relation to town recommended studies. But it's, you have the oversight of the entire town. And therefore, we would respect whatever, you know, information or advice you might have as well. There is one that was withdrawn, that we received the application.
We saw that crossed out.
But that was withdrawn.
So, so these numbers represent the amount that the applicants have asked for?
Absolutely. So they've requested $2,550,000 and we have $2,62,000, using all of our available funds.
Okay.
We do try to hold some funding back, you know, as a, as a resource for the future, so.
These don't represent any kind of decision on the part of the-
None whatsoever.
It's just, this is what you have in front of you.
That's right.
How, how much of these, the funds that are being requested are actually money that would have had, would have been in the town budget had they not been applied for through the community preservation process?
That's always an interesting question, isn't it? I think the Regional Housing Services Office of the Town of Concord has never fallen under the town budget. It's been under CPC since the inception of the CPC. And the staff and technical services of the Town of Concord, this has always fallen under the aegis of the CPC. That, that particular budget for $40,000, I should just note, may increase. I don't think it will increase this year. But legal funds to this point to oversee the appropriateness of these, of these applications because they would be presented in the town warrant, are done by the town council. And therefore, the town warrant and the preparation for the town meeting absorbs that budget to this point. That may not be the case always going forward. So I should just note that. The, the ones that are very-
They didn't like what-
And then God said.
They didn't like what you said.
I guess not. And the, the ones that are specifically labeled Town of Concord, you will see the Concord Free Public Library, not so much because they've already, Town of Concord has already contributed so much to that. But the Asaibet River Bluff Preservation, the Junction Village Open Space, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, the Asaibet Pedestrian Bridge Construction, Drawings and Permitting, and the recreational- Am I doing that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Facilities Strategic Plan would also come under the town.
And Diane, I also want to turn to Stephen on this. I believe there is a possible duplicate request in number 11. The-
Number 11.
Bacteria blooms in White Pond. There is a similar or the same request in the town budget. Stephen, can you address this?
Yes, I hope everyone can hear me. I'm having serious connection issues, I think, related to the wind. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So the, the town staff, town staff across multiple departments have been meeting and talking about White Pond. And I think how I would describe our view on this, on this particular application is that we support what they want to do. In fact, we are working actively towards developing a treatment and testing program that will be an ongoing recurring thing that is built into the operating budget where it belongs now that White Pond is a town asset. So we don't oppose the goals of the application. In fact, we are, I think, as the board knows, if the application was approved, the money would still come to the town departments for oversight and management. So the net effect of the work is the same. I guess our view is we want to build it into the town budget because we do view it as an ongoing expense and obligation. And because as the chair had laid out, there's already a, the program is already oversubscribed to the tune of, I think, I think I heard $400,000. So we want to work with the vendors and the White Pond Advisory Committee and take this on as an ongoing expense.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure I entirely understand, Terry.
Yeah, we didn't catch all-
Does, does this mean the town is going to undertake this cost? Or does it just mean it's going to formally support this, this application? Because at the present moment-
My understanding is it's in the town budget.
Okay.
Well, yeah, we're working, we're not, we don't formally support the application because we are going to put it in the, in the town budget.
Okay.
As an ongoing expense. We are actively working to get quotes. And we will, we will make this a part of our ongoing operations. And because CPA funds are already, like I said, there's, there's more, there's more applications and there are funds available. We feel like it should be in the operating budget. But it's the same, we're only talking about funding source. The, the net effect of who will be carrying out the duties and who would have the response is the same.
Thank you so much. So I presume we will not continue to adjudicate that particular application, but we'll remove it from the warrant. Is that what you're saying, Stephen? Because the town will pick it up. Because presently, our lawyer has told us that if there is not a town, if there, if this is not signed by and forwarded by the town officially, that it is imprudent for us to okay this. So that it, it helps a great deal if the town will simply make certain that this is in your budget. And all of those concerns, which have become technical concerns, but frustrating for those involved both at White Pond and, and, and certainly not for the CPC, we're capable of trying to figure all this out. But we would be very grateful if the town were to pick up this cost.
Yeah. I think that, just to be clear, we think it, I, I don't think it's a good use for CPA funds this year because we are going to fund it through the budget. But that doesn't mean we don't support the goals of testing and treatment. We do, of course.
I'm, I'm not, I'm sorry that I'm not understanding. I guess I'll have to-
Right. I think you should follow offline.
I will.
But it sounds like it's the same project being requested in two places. So we might be able to cross it off your list, Diane.
It would be, it would be terrific.
Yeah.
Because right now it is a, there's, there's considerable contention about the fact that the state seems to suggest that it's perfectly fine for a committee that is empowered by the select board to request funding. Our legal counsel has suggested it's a poor precedent to do that because it's not really an operation that has a treasurer, a funding operation. They can't really administer the funds.
Right.
So that there, there has to be a town signature.
Right.
And at the present moment, there isn't one. So however that works out, you know, I will come over to the townhouse tomorrow and see if I can, can discern what's happening.
Okay, great.
So thank you, Terry, for that question.
Can I ask you one?
Of course.
What, what level of, of fund matching do we anticipate? fund matching do we anticipate getting from the state for this, the fiscal year we're talking about?
Well, that's in the two million, sixty two thousand dollars. That's coming from, that's partially the state, and that's partly the one point five percent surcharge on the on the taxes and property taxes in our town. We could go up, some towns go as high as three percent, but the town of Concord voted one point five percent.
No, but of the two million some odd, a certain portion that comes from the surcharge on our taxes.
Yes.
Then we also get some fund matching at some level.
We get, yes, we get quite a bit of money from the state, and I didn't bring that figure with me. But I'd be happy to send it to everybody to show you. Carrie, do you have exactly how much the state gives us in? Thank you.
So for fiscal twenty two, the state matches five hundred twenty three thousand seventeen dollars. That is significantly higher than what we have received. We had estimated twenty five percent match, and we are receiving thirty eight point two four percent.
So is that accounted for in the chart that you have, the FY twenty three estimated CPA funds revenue?
It is.
It has the bigger number in it now?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
So my understanding is that the select board is supposed to give you a sense of priorities tonight.
That's right.
In the past, we have ranked them one, two, three, four, five.
That's right.
I think we could do that again, or a simpler way might be, we could just say, you know, this one's high priority, this one's not, what?
High priority, medium priority, low priority would be also helpful if that's a more convenient way for you to discuss it.
All right.
I I've put together a spreadsheet that summarizes the funding by project. And here, I can probably zoom it a little bit more. And what it does is it summarizes as well, you know, the remaining balance. And just to anticipate my liaison report, I attended the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee Meeting where Marcia Rasmussen reported that the Community Preservation Committee had asked her to sharpen her pencil, I think was the word.
That is exactly the phrase.
And because she had a number of proposals before the committee, you know, including the open space, the river pedestrian bridge, et cetera. So what she discussed with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee was that of the projects that she had on the table, the one that could conceivably be deferred to a subsequent year was the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Improvement, because the work is expected to commence the subsequent year. And while it wouldn't be part of the scope of the, you know, hundred percent design, that first of all, the state might come through and decide to fund. Secondly, even if they didn't, a change order could be submitted with a subsequent year's funding from the CPC presumably to take care of this. And in the meantime, there would be a specification of a split rail fence near White Pond, so.
Thank you. You have more up to date information than we do as of last Wednesday.
Would suggest is that we could strike that one. And then if you also strike the Bloom Prevention Project, following what Stephen Crane just said, then that brings us only within sixty thousand dollars of the requested funds. Now, I just noticed that Marcia Rasmussen raised her hand, so we perhaps should let her speak, because I may have misspoken.
I'm not, I'm not sure I understood the town manager's total response.
Sorry, I I think I fixed my connectivity issues. Sorry. Do you want me to restate it, Linda?
Yeah, if you could just give us your bottom line.
Yeah, I I apologize for the for the connection issues. The bottom line is we support the goals of the testing and treatment, and we are going to take on those obligations and fund them through our operating budget, so. We don't formally endorse the CPA application, because we'll cover it through our budget on an ongoing basis. And, you know, we're working with the same vendors and getting proposals and everything else. We're we're engaged in this as we speak. And because CPA is already oversubscribed, we feel it's more appropriate to fund it through the operating budget.
Thank you. I think I understand now.
Yeah, I think I do too.
And thank you, Stephen.
Sorry about that.
Before we let Marcia speak, I want to say that I had a similar thinking to Matt. But I'd like to get Marcia's take on it. What I was thinking was on number eight and nine, the junction of open space and the Bruce Freeman Rail, that perhaps they could be split into two years, because not all of the work might be done in year one, or the state might come through or whatever. So I came out with a three hundred thousand dollar total, but it was allocated maybe two hundred for Junction Village and one hundred for Bruce Freeman, but you know, it comes down to the same bottom line, so I'd be interested in hearing Marcia's response to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Marcia Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management, and while Matt is partially correct about having certain pieces or the the half mile of the two rail fence include able to be installed or constructed as part of a change order. The decorative metal fence, if that is not in the original contract, we cannot make additions to it. So my request was going to be reduced from three hundred thousand dollars to eighty thousand dollars, a savings of two hundred and twenty thousand. That is, that number represents the cost of the two rail fence for half a mile, plus the differential between a three rail fence and a decorative metal fence that the the residents have requested along the White Pond side of the trail for, it's about five hundred feet of that. And then an additional fifty thousand dollars for other landscaping signage and benches in other locations along the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. So it's an eighty thousand dollar request down from three hundred. I I've also been looking at the Junction Village project and we've had some initial conversations. We have not had a decision amongst the committee members, but the recommendation might be to reduce that or to look at the Asa Bette Pedestrian Bridge, so. Really, it was only the Bruce Freeman that has had public discussion with the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Advisory Committee with that reduction. Thank you.
Okay.
May I ask a clarifying question of Marcia? Marcia, when do you think you will know about the Junction Village funding request?
I'm not sure when our next meeting is located. It might be this Thursday or next Thursday, so.
Thank you very much.
On the Asa Bette River Bluff project, I think that was something that the board considered recently, and we were asked to provide, was it a transfer of funds to help fund that project? But I don't think that we actually made any commitment to providing funds from at least from any funds that we had control over.
Well, and I assume that even if the Preservation Committee is able to allocate funds, it doesn't mean that a deal will happen.
No, it doesn't.
And that in in that case, the money could come back later for other projects, so. I I think that the the idea here is to make it financially possible to acquire the site, even though this isn't really the full cost.
The property is on the market for two point eight million dollars.
Yeah.
And so putting together the funding that's necessary to make this possible, only in part.
Right, it'll need private donations, a lot of things.
About the Asa Bette.
No, this is the
This is the Asa Bette River Bluff project in which a million dollars is being requested. The property is on sale.
This is something we discussed in some detail.
Yes, I know. I listened. So.
So, I mean, again, I don't think we're meant to become the CPC, so I don't think that we have to redline too many more things, other than just to note that there is still a gap here, and it probably would be helpful for us to describe whether there's any projects that we either really want to ensure are within, or those that we would prefer to defer at this time.
So let me just ask one question about the Wright Tavern. Did you say, Diane, that this is year two of the project that we gave?
The Wright Tavern would be, actually, it's the third year, I think, Terry. I've been trying to to, I don't, I have to go back and dig up the information, because I wasn't on the CPAs at that time, because we helped to renovate.
Project, right?
I'm so sorry.
This would finish the project this year?
No, no. There is, this is phase two of a phase three
Okay.
renovation plan.
Phase two of three. Okay, well, I think that we have to fund number one, the Regional Housing Services Program, and number twelve, the Staff and Technical Services.
So high priority for those two.
I I think so. That's my opinion.
I I don't think you'll fund any.
And I also would personally give a very high priority to the Asa Bette River Pedestrian Bridge. That's something that we've been talking about for many years. It it accomplishes many of the goals. We're talking about transportation, economic vitality, reduction of fossil fuel, et cetera. So those are my three highest priorities. But it's very hard to find a low priority in here. But
Yes, so I'm struggling with the same thing you are. You know, all of these, many, most of these projects are very worthy. And so as soon as we start ranking them one to twelve or one to thirteen, the people who are getting the numbers of the, you know, on the lower end or but it doesn't necessarily reflect you know, the quality of the projects in a sense. So I guess, taking your approach, I would also, in addition to the pedestrian bridge, I would consider the Asa Bette River Bluff Preservation and Housing, two of the priorities. I think along with the priority would be for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, as Marcia has now defined it. And then I and again, here's the dilemma. On the lower tier, but not necessarily in terms of their worthiness, but looking at how you start thinking about the dollars, I placed both the Old Man's Exterior and the Wright Tavern on the lower tier, along with the Concord Direct Facility Strategic Plan. And just let me explain again, I I think all three of those are very worthy projects. I was thinking about terms of, you know, an enforced priority ranking. There may be ways to balance all of those. I was thinking about how you would allocate dollars between those three projects. Let me say it that way. If that makes sense, what I'm trying to, how I'm trying to describe it. So in other words, I wouldn't not fund those projects. I think they're all very important. But there may be a way to looking at the other priorities to sort of look at those three and say, how can we manage the dollar award?
Linda, what was the third one? You said the Old Man's Wright Tavern and?
The Concord Direct Facility Strategic Plan.
Thank you.
All three of those, I think, are important, but.
Okay. Susan? Yeah, I agree with what Linda said about the ones that would, I wouldn't consider top tier, those three. But Matt, if you could move the chart over a little, I just want to see, see what's what's where here. The other one, I was looking at the application of the Junction Village Open Space. And it seemed like the total cost was something like one point three over several years. But I it wasn't clear, well, it wasn't clear to me how much they could actually do. And in the next fiscal year, because of, you know, I know some of it will have to wait till the building is further along, but so I had a question about whether the whole three hundred was needed for next year, or whether that could be deferred. And the other things, housing, one ten, one ten, one library oral history, I think are high priorities for me, along with the land acquisition, the Asa Bette Bluff and the the Asa Bette River Bridge. And of course, the the regional housing and then the administrative forty thousand down at the at the the last item.
Yeah, I'm I'm not even taking votes on the two that are highlighted in green, because I think they are
They're kind of a given, yeah.
Linda, I think I missed one of your non priority, and I Wright Tavern, okay, and then I'm lower, sure.
Yeah, instead of none.
Okay. And then Henry, do you have any priorities or not, or lower priorities?
Oh, I'm I'm happy to have no opinion on this.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm still not a hundred percent sure I caught everybody's, but if you see that, if you've got anything missing. So my view is actually kind of surprising in that I've been a big fan of the Asa Bette River Production or Pedestrian Bridge concept. But as the cost has ballooned to the most recent estimate of four and a half to five million dollars.
Oh, really?
It's very hard for me to really support that level of spending. I mean, you could literally buy two electric vans and hire people for twenty five years to drive them to take people back and forth, I mean, for that price.
Matt, that would be state and federal money.
It's not our money.
I guess I'm a federal taxpayer, I'm a state taxpayer. I just think, you know, what is the utility of of projects? And it's, I just find it personally difficult to sign up for that level of spending. I I was very enthusiastic, you know, at at the original budget that was proposed, and just as I was very enthusiastic about the affordable housing, you know, along Commonwealth App.
Yeah.
But, you know, in the current environment, and it sounds like with the additional constraints that have been put on such projects, it it just makes it very, very difficult to, you know, do them. And I just think if we were going to propose other kinds of infrastructure projects, what could we get done for four and a half to five million dollars of state money or federal money? Because there will be infrastructure money for other infrastructure projects. Is this the right one for that budget? You know, we're only going to get so many shots, so.
So I guess
I would put it on my lower priority list.
The riverbank is protected by the
The Wild and Seine Rivers.
Yeah, the two hundred, you know, the the Rivers Act.
So I'm I'm sorry to say it, but I just think if that's what it's going to cost, it's it's difficult. I mean, even three hundred thousand just to do the drawings and permits, it's a huge sum of money. So
Other priorities?
Yeah, so I'm I'm very interested in the Asa Bette River Bluff project. I think that's a priority. I think that I hope that is the Recreation Strategic Plan, it's a Recreation and Open Space Strategic Plan, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, that wasn't really stated, but I think
I apologize, I should have said that.
Expands the scope, and I think that that's important to do.
It's only defined as Recreation Facility Strategic Plan, but it is for open space as well, Matt.
And then I have personally benefited tremendously from the oral history segments. I strongly recommend to anybody who, you know, to look at those. So I would put that in the list. But overall, we're not, there's not a big gap, so.
Right. I kind of agree with Linda that we might be able to take a few of them and take, you know, twenty five thousand from each one, like, for example, the Recreation Strategic Plan was one of them. Maybe make it fifty thousand, but as you said, we're not the CPC, so
Right.
that's for you guys to do.
I almost feel like we should kind of just provide these
I agree. I don't think they need a specific ranking, but Linda, you had another comment?
No.
Oh, sorry, when Matt was talking before. Oh, sorry, when, when Matt was talking before.
Sure you don't have any input?
Yeah, I do.
No, I, I would say this, that, you know, the, uh, the committee has, uh, listened to presentations made. On behalf of each of these projects and it, uh, and since we haven't heard those presentations. And you haven't had them yet, have you?
Oh, yes.
They had the public hearing, they had the hearing.
We've had many hours of hearings.
You're in a much better position to evaluate them.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Right, especially when you're so close. You know, you're getting within a hundred thousand dollars now of where you need to be, so. I'm sure you'll choose the right.
I'm liaison to that committee and I can attest to the fact that it was a great deal of expertise there, very thoughtful deliberations. And, um, the, um. The sharpness of the questions and the thinking about how they're reviewing these applications is very apparent, so.
This is an extraordinarily talented committee and I'm just cheering it. The talent is in that committee.
I did have one more question, which was around the 110 Walden Street. I think a question that I posed last year. Just because if you look at the list of things that, you know, many of them look to be just deferred maintenance. And it struck me at that time, even in Phase Three, that, you know, is there a? Go-forward business plan for that? That facility? And, you know, it, it just, because. We can't keep running like this.
Um, I, I think this is the, I believe this is the last of their requests and there is a very serious business plan. Uh, being managed thoughtfully by that organization. Um, and I, I think they have been the, uh, the, the recipient of, the happy recipient of the rise in the stock market. Um, and therefore their, their, um, reserve funds are more robust than they have been in the past. And I, I think they're, they're probably, um, I, I think they'll probably be able to go forward for. Quite a number of years and I can't really speak for them because I'm not on their board.
But it's a wonderful facility, I just.
Yeah, given the discussions that we've had, um, are, the, the, the maintenance that they're doing on this is not just deferred maintenance. I mean, it's actually things that are structurally fairly significant, like removing some, um, some fire escapes. That don't serve any purpose, but in fact are impediments, uh, to the safety of the building. So I mean, the kinds of things they're trying to do, I think, make a great deal of sense.
Okay, and I've heard very good things about the Old Man's Preservation Project and the Wright Tavern, the progress of both of those projects.
You're opposed to those?
No, I'm, I've heard good things about.
Oh, both, yes, yeah, okay.
They're all excellent projects. Um, I guess, um. You could add my name to the strategic plan being, um, low priority that I had, I failed to say that before. And I think what you should do, Matt, is. Send this to Diane, but in number two and number 13, though, I mean, line item two and 13 that we all agree on. You should probably put everyone, yeah, just so it's clear.
I would appreciate that very much. I think I've taken pretty good notes, but if I missed something, it would be lovely to have. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's hard to give away money, isn't it?
And it shocks me that on the Middle School Building Committee with the Value Engineering List, in a few minutes, we're talking about projects that have the scope. Of what you, you spend a year doing due diligence on and it, I, I wish there was some way to change that.
Yeah. Okay, we are now going to move on to, um, the Town Manager Separation Agreement. And the Joint Statement. I think it's appropriate that we do the separation agreement first. And, um, you've all received a copy and I have here a signed copy from Stephen. And what I'm looking for now is a vote. For the board to. It's, um, approve this separation agreement. And at that point, um. I will sign it and we will move on.
Um, I move that the board authorized the chair to execute the separation agreement on behalf of the town.
Second was from Susan, yeah.
Okay, roll call vote?
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, and it looks like I need a witness. Um, Matt, if you would sign that right there. Okay, thank you. And again, I would like, on behalf of the board and the whole community, to thank Stephen for his work. As the Town Manager, especially during the challenging COVID times. And we do wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors, Stephen. So.
Yeah, thanks. And again, just, um, I think the worth of the opportunity, it's. Finished in a couple of years, but, uh, we had the opportunity to work with a great group of people and I likewise wish all of them and all of you the best as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, um. We have a joint statement that we would like to issue. Um. Perhaps the best thing would be if I read it. Of course, I don't have it with me. Matt, do you have it? Or Linda? Oh, I must say, there's a typo in it. The word voluntary should be voluntarily.
Okay.
Was it in the materials?
What's that?
It was not in the packet.
It was?
Yes, it is in the packet.
It was in the first. Packet, but it's not in the latest packet.
Yeah, oh, I thought it, I thought it still is.
I could not find it in the latest copy of the packet, so I'm going back to the previous.
I've got it. Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Okay. November 22nd, 2021, Joint Statement of the Concord Select Board and Town Manager Stephen Crane. Today, Stephen Crane voluntarily resigned as Concord Town Manager effective Friday, December 31, 2021. The Board and Crane have entered into a separation agreement that will end the three-year employment agreement that was due to expire June 30th, 2022. On behalf of the Board, Chair Terry Ackerman stated, "We thank Stephen for his work as Town Manager through very challenging times. His leadership of the town's COVID response, especially in support of local business. Businesses helped ensure that town departments continue to meet the needs of the community. We wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors." Stephen Crane stated, "I'm grateful to the Board for the opportunity to be the Town Manager of Concord. I'm proud of the many ways we worked together through the pandemic to support residents and visitors while still accomplishing many of the Board's goals. I also appreciate the chance to work with a talented, dedicated team of coworkers who have made this experience deeply rewarding."
Thank you, Susan. Okay, um, so I will, um, work with Chris Carmody and we will send that statement to the press. And moving on now. We are going to talk about the transition. So, let's see, I have a few notes here. I've kind of divided this discussion into, um, several pieces. So first of all. We obviously. Need at some point a search committee. And so. If you're interested and you're listening out there, please send in a volunteer card if you want to be on a search committee. And, um, at some point, we might need a search firm as well. I don't think right now that we need to rush into getting a search firm. Um, I think we should. Take a deep breath and really think through what we want to do. Um. Should we have? A very short-term active Town Manager with a rapid search? Or should we? Move carefully and thoughtfully? And perhaps have an interim Town Manager for six months, 12 months or longer, while we really figure out as a community. What we are looking for. So let me stop right there and. Get ideas from the Board on this part and then we'll continue. Who would like to go first? Susan?
Thank you, Terry. Um. I like the, I, I, I think, um. If we take our time, it, it gives us some space between Chris Whalen and the new person, because I think this, uh. Uh, his longevity here plus his, his. Um, likability made it a really tough job to fill. And that if we take some time. It'll give us a little more distance between. Um, so we're not looking for another Chris, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I would. Support, um, the idea of having perhaps a longer term inter, an interim from six to 18 months, whatever it is. And, um, give us time to. Figure out where, where we're going.
Okay. Other comments?
Um, so one reaction I have is that, um. Uncertainty is extremely difficult, I think, on our staff. They've been through. An enormous amount in terms of COVID and still there's so many unknowns in terms of, um. Job and workforce training, uh, changes and all kinds of things. So I think we need some immediate. Interim clarity for them, whether it's. Naming an acting person who steps up for X amount of time, but to be as clear about that as possible. To also reach out, to indicate to them that, um, soliciting their feedback. In the, this next step of the process is going to be important. Um, and then I think. We'd need to take some time among ourselves, clearly, so that we define, um, how we're going to proceed. But I would hope that we don't take too long to develop what that plan is going to look like. So that that can also be communicated to our employees. So I, I'm going to start there in terms of that's sort of how I begin thinking about it.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, Henry?
I have some, um, views of my own on the process of finding, uh, Chief Executive. Uh, having, uh, served on a, a committee, uh, that interviewed candidates for the, uh, superintendent of schools. About 10 or 15 years ago. Uh, I have a great deal of skepticism about, uh, search consultants. And, um. And I don't need to go into any detail, but I think they actually kind of are, um. They help to ensure that the, uh, the outcome is mediocre. Um, and, um. So, um, I, I think the, what we have to face in the, uh, and if we were going to choose a search firm, which I would resist, I think. We should certainly take our time on doing that. I don't see any sense of urgency. I think that we do need a, an interim. An interim, uh, manager. And it probably, the interim manager should not be a person who is a candidate for the position. So it, because it should be politically neutral with regard to our existing staff and the opportunities that are being offered. I think there are a number of options that we have and if we chose the right person. Who is an experienced Town Manager, perhaps somebody who had worked for the town in the past in a. Position of substantial responsibility, um, but was no longer working for the town and, um. But still knew the town and had maturity and experience. Uh, they could also, they could manage not only the transition, but also assist us in the. Process of finding and hiring a, a new Town Manager. And I think, um. I think the ideal solution would be to find such a person. A, a number of names have been proposed to me and. A number of people have made inquiries and that, along those lines. And I think that we might be able to find somebody, uh, who would, uh, take the job for six months approximately. No, that's just my feeling for the amount of time that it would take, uh, to, um, as I say. Jump right in, manage the town and help us with the search. Uh, I know the school committee has done that in the past. They've hired, uh, interim people who are retired. School superintendents is, there's actually a, uh, I think it's a reservoir of them out there. And there's a reservoir, I think, of retired, uh, Town Managers. And that's where I think we should go. I definitely don't think our first step should be, um. To start looking for a search firm and, um. It may not be to, um, make the obvious choices, uh, about the, um. Interim, uh, you know, somebody who's going to be managing things, uh, for the first two weeks in January.
All right. Uh, Matt?
So I feel like we need to have stability and clarity, um, for the sake of the town and for the town staff. Um, so to, um, put into place, um, some executive management that is familiar, understood and, and not create. You know, multiple disruptions, uh, that are necessary, um, at this time would be the, the best course forward. And because I do think that, you know, we, we do need to think about the longer term and that Concord is likely to be in the national spotlight. Over the next few years as we approach the 250th anniversary of the revolution. Um, and that, um, you know, while we may have, uh, the best candidates already in our midst, we also should. Owe it to the town to do a thorough search and that search doesn't have to be a rushed search. In fact, I think it shouldn't be a rushed search. And we should seek the very best candidate for the long term for Concord.
Okay, so I think we have a consensus that we want stability. We don't need to rush, rush, rush. We need to think carefully. Perhaps we're not going to need a search firm. Um, I, but we don't have to decide that right now. Um, if we were to consider an interim person. I think that we could look at an external. Candidate, as Henry is saying. But I think we also have two very highly qualified internal candidates who would do a great job as interim. Um. And I'm going to ask each of them to. Comment on that, but first, um, let's continue going around, see, um, what other thoughts. Those Board has, and then I'm going to ask those two people to say a few words. Or do you want to hear from them first? Maybe that's better. Okay, um.
You know, uh, I think that we might be a good idea, uh, for us to digest. To digest this for, uh, a short while. Um, and that maybe, uh. How we could, the, we as individuals, as members of the Board, oh, sorry, we as individuals of the Board. Might pass along our own thoughts on the matter to you as Chair. And you could, um, we could perhaps. Be, be more thoughtful and assemble our ideas in a way that, um. Would be, um. Practical without having to, I mean, this is a very sensitive issue because it affects our current employees. And it, it involves making, uh, decisions and judgments that affect them and we should not. We should, we should not, um. Raise any expectations that would, might be disappointed by having a more detailed. Raise an expectations that would, might be disappointed by having a more detailed public discussion of it. Until we really are more, maybe we've digested the situation more thoroughly.
Okay. So one possibility. Would be that we could. Take some action tonight. One possibility would be that we take some more time to think about it. And call another meeting of the board. Or even wait until our next meeting, December twentieth to take action. Well, that's getting a little bit late, so. But, so there's, we don't want to rush. We want to do what's right, but we want to create the stability. And have a plan. So. Matt and Linda, any thoughts on that?
So. For the benefit of the select board as well as the public listening to this discussion. You know, there are parts of this discussion that are important for the public to hear. It's, but it's also difficult to discuss. Some aspects of, of this discussion and be frank without in any way jeopardizing. Individuals who might be affected by or be involved in that discussion. So do you want to speak to? The process in terms of what has to be public and not public at this point?
Sure. So we have checked with council and. Our decision about. Whether to have an interim, whether it's external, internal, and who it is, all must be done in open session. The only part that can be done in executive session is after we choose somebody. The contract negotiations would be in executive session. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and that's come from legal counsel?
Yes. So. Yes, in fact. I talked to both Labor Council and. General Town Council. They both say that. So.
Like, Terry, one option might be is that. I believe that we could designate a working group of less than a quorum. To. Come up, at least to come up with some ideas. And to talk to, and, and to approach potential candidates and to at least get an idea. Of what, what options are open to us.
Wouldn't that be a subcommittee if there's more than one individual?
If it's less than a quorum?
Yes. It's a task.
Would have to have an open session.
Yeah.
Um, so Susan, do you have some other thoughts?
Um, I, I think that. We have to balance our desire to. To. Look at a number, I don't know what the number is of interim candidates with. Our need to, to move quickly on this part since we have just. A few weeks so that there's someone. Holding the reins. Before, or, so there's no time left without a town manager. So I, I don't. I think we've all had a while to think about this because it wasn't. It, it's been a couple, it was twenty second of November. So I think it's been top of all of our minds since that point and that we have had some time to develop ideas. On our own of. Timing and. What to do. So I'm. In my mind, I've, I haven't really considered former employees that might come back. I've really just thought about the possibilities that we have in our midst. That's kind of where I was headed with it, but. I'm interested in what other folks think.
Okay, Matt?
So I believe that with the very limited transition time that we have available. And that in fact, if we look for an external candidate, that we would have negative transition time because. The town manager by all probability would have departed by the time that we were able to put an external candidate in place. I think that the only practical approach without creating, like I said, two disruptions of going. From an acting to an interim and then from an interim to some permanent selection. Would be to actually seek an internal candidate to become an interim town manager for the next several months. And so I, I would like to proceed along those lines. Just again, for the sake of both clarity and stability. And taking into account the precious little time that we have for transition.
Matt, can I assume that you're suggesting that. Interim position would not necessarily be eliminated from being considered for a full-time position?
That's right. That's right. That, that anybody that would serve in that role could potentially become the long-term candidate as well. And I, I wouldn't want to exclude them from that.
I actually agree with Matt and Susan. And, and Stephen, Stephen has requested to know as soon as possible what our plan is so that he can work on a transition. There are only three weeks or so left and it's a holiday time. We are very fortunate in Concord that we have two highly qualified internal candidates who. Are basically ready to step into the role and I think we should ask both of them now. If they have anything to add that we should consider. And. So I think that Kate is participating by Zoom. And Kate, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm just trying to get my video up. Uh, yes, thank you. I, I'm not feeling very well, so I didn't want to. Come in, in person. So I appreciate the conversation. I understand that there's a number of factors that the select board has to take into account. And while I understand the desire to look for an outside person. I think that's very difficult and it will be very difficult for the staff. Simply being in the deputy position allows me the opportunity to have a lot of conversations to be involved. In, in, in that in many ways. And I think that. We, at least at the senior management level and certainly at the division manager level for the conversation I've had. Are worried about consistency of operations and the morale of staff. And with any leader and with any change, there's a set of uncertainty. I think it would be a mistake to bring somebody in that isn't already intertwined in the organization right now. Because that person is going to have a learning curve to get up to speed. And just in time when that happens, you will then introduce someone else. So that said, I remain committed to my role as deputy town manager. I have been very free. With a conversation that I had with the chair that I am in fact not interested in the town manager position. That doesn't mean that if I needed to do something in the interim, that's part of the essential functions of my job. It's written into my job description. But if the idea would be that another candidate might want an opportunity to be the manager. And to be able to do that for a, a, a long-term interim position. So that, you know, we can discuss fit. I certainly would, would work alongside that, that person and. And I think I would be excited to it. And I, I think. You know, Terry was alluding to the, to two candidates, which are myself and Carrie. I work very well with Carrie. I appreciate her. I think that she's a professional. And we have very different skill sets and we recognize that about, about each other. And that may be very helpful in a time of transition. But again, you know, I, I'm here to fulfill any role in the interim that you need, but. I want it to be clear that I, I'm not interested in the job long-term.
Did everyone hear that all right on the board? Okay, Carrie, if you would like to say anything.
And also my machine's about to shut down, so I'm trying to get the hosting on my phone. So we don't lose the conference. Sorry.
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. This evening, I too appreciate the conversation that you have, the position that you are in. It's, it's a difficult time. For you, it's a difficult time for the community. It's a difficult time for the organization. I would be interested in serving as. The interim town manager. It's no secret I applied the last time the job was. Available. I do have thirty years' experience working in municipal government prior to coming here. I served ten years. As town manager for the town of Lunenburg, which is a community smaller than Concord, but that, not that much smaller. Earlier in my career, I also served for five months as the interim town manager. In the town of Chelmsford when they were going from a long, a long-serving town manager to another person. I was not up. Interested in the position at the time, but I did serve as the interim and Chelmsford is a much larger. Community and it was years ago and I've learned a lot since then. I do think it is important for the organization. To be working with somebody whom they're familiar with. I do feel that I have a very good working relationship. With all members of the SMT, division managers. I've had the opportunity to interact with a lot of employees. And not the least of which Kate Hodges and I work very well together. And as she mentioned, we do have. Different skill sets and I do think that they're very complementary. The only caveat I would. Put forward is. Because of my current position as chief financial officer, it's a very busy and full position and part of that is treasurer for the town. So it would be inappropriate for me to serve both as interim town manager and treasurer. It would also for in, for a variety of internal controls, procedures, be inappropriate for me to be, to have overlap. In those two positions. So it would be necessary to bring somebody in also on an interim basis. And for that reason, it would be difficult for me to commit to an interim appointment that wasn't. Some length in time because there's a lot of transition that needs to happen with a variety of things. So that, that would be the only. Caveat that I would put on that. Thank you.
Okay. So having heard that.
Thank you both for. Stepping forward with your interest and for your comments to us.
Right.
Very much appreciated.
We, we really are so fortunate to have such highly qualified people ready to step in. And also that you both have a very positive. Team attitude. We, we are very fortunate. So are there other comments from the board, questions? Do, um, do we want to take some time with this or are we ready to take action tonight?
I, I would have no problem with taking actions tonight, but I, if others have objections, I also would be willing to wait.
I, I could take action tonight as well, but with respect. If the rest of the board wants to defer to later time. Excuse me.
Okay.
It seems to me we should take action soon. It, it seems to me that. At this point with two people who have stepped forward and made somewhat clear their conditions in terms of. Serving in this role, that we could call an executive session to discuss how we're going to. Present to them. Decision in the, in contract terms. I, I think that would qualify.
No, we have to, we have to choose a person and then the executive session is only about. The.
Would follow.
The. Terms, the salary.
So that would follow. Yeah, okay. Um, Henry, do you have some thoughts?
I agree that we're. I, I agree that it would. We should defer a. A final decision on this. We have no regularly scheduled meeting for a week from tonight. We could hold a regular meeting for the purpose of. Resolving that issue and that could be the only issue on the agenda. And if people had other ideas about what we should do, they could try to develop those in the meantime.
Okay, we also could meet. Let me just say, we could also meet. On the sixteenth, which we are scheduled to come to the public hearing. For the special town meeting and so we could meet. I think that starts at seven o'clock. We could meet at six or six thirty or after the public hearing, or we could have a special meeting on the thirteenth.
I don't think we should. I don't think we should bury it in something that we're going to have to probably do some preparation. For, which with regard to the. School financing issue, which is a big issue, right? Okay. And so I don't think this, this decision should get.
Okay.
Confused with that. I think it's worth. Spending at least, you know, some time where we have the opportunity to pay. Serious attention to it.
All right, Linda?
So. You know, I've already. Right, as we all have at this point, recognize both of these individuals for stepping forward and, and for their comments. It's equally important to me about as both of them being very valid, valued and an important part of this organization. It's. Equally important to me. About the implications of these decisions in ter, in terms of their. Future. Willingness to stay with us in, in employment. And I know that's something that can't be guaranteed, but. It's, you know. I just want us to be mindful of that.
Okay, so with that in mind, do you prefer to. Wait and schedule another meeting or do you want to take action tonight?
I think we have a, I, I think. I myself would like a little more time to think about this.
Okay. Okay, so we have two members that would like to think more and three who are ready to move. Right.
Yeah, but I also had said previously, if fellow members have reservations.
Well, that's what I was going to say, that I think we should respect the people who want to think about it some more. And, um. We should set a time to continue this discussion. So I think it should either be on the thirteenth. We should. Go back to having a meeting on this or on the sixteenth when we're already meeting, but not wait until the twentieth. I think the twentieth is pretty late.
Yeah, I agree.
I think the staff is looking for stability. Stephen is looking at transition. Whoever's going to walk into this needs some time to prepare. So do you want to meet on the thirteenth or the sixteenth or another day?
Thirteenth, which is.
A week from tonight.
Yeah, the thirteenth works for me.
Okay, is that all right with you, Matt?
I'll have to meet, miss the DEI commission, but so be it.
Okay, all right. We will meet on the thirteenth and hopefully this will be our only business. Okay, very good. All right. Thanks again, Kate and Carrie for. Helping us through this. Okay, we're moving on to committee appointments.
So. Move to appoint Erica Proll of fourteen hundred Lowell Road to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a term ending April thirtieth. Twenty twenty-two in place of Molly Wareman, who declined appointment.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Okay, now our next item is committee liaison reports, and I'm looking at the time. It's almost nine thirty, and I'm thinking, well, maybe I'll change what I just said. Maybe we'll have two items of business on the 13th. The interim town manager and liaison reports. Does that sound like a good plan?
Sounds fun.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. The next item is miscellaneous correspondence. I want to thank Pat Nelson, Janet Rothrock, Dory Kehoe, and Eric Van Loon for your letters that are in the select board packet. And at this time, we will move to public comments. Does anyone here in the room have public comments? Don't see anybody. On Zoom, do we have any public comments?
You can use the raise hand feature under reactions on the Zoom interface if you do. Okay, I don't see anyone.
Okay, we don't see anyone. Then we will have a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Esterbrook Road as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
And I do so declare.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, aye.
Could I ask that whoever is running the executive session email me the the connection since I'm not physically there?
Okay, we didn't have a link, and my battery is down to two percent. So I can get you on my phone potentially, but that's the extent of it at this.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. Meeting's adjourned, right?
Meeting is adjourned.